Good evening and welcome to the July 2nd meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. Mr. Bill Lutz will begin this evening with the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we are grateful for this evening. We are grateful for the souls gathered in this room, and we are grateful for those souls that are in our community that protect us each and every day. And we are grateful for those men and women that sacrificed so much for our freedoms here in this country. Lord, be with us each and every day. Help us to sow peace where there may be discord. Help us to sow harmony where there may be anger and frustration. Lord, you've called us to be leaders of our community, leaders of our families, leaders of our workplaces. Help us never forget the least and the last and the lost among us. Be with us each and every day. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Present.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Lutz?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Well, I move to excuse Mrs. Oda.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twist to excuse Mrs. Oda. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda is excused.
Tonight, we have a presentation from Ms. Nicole Loy, Executive Director of Troy Main Street. Ms. Loy, would you please come forward? Good evening.
I'd just like to thank you all so much for your support of Troy Main Street so far. Because of your support, Troy Main Street has made great strides in keeping the downtown a vibrant, active, and fun place to be. Although half a year remains in 2018, I'd like to take a moment to celebrate our successes so far. The year began with a visit from Heritage Ohio, which is our state anchor, who informed us that Troy Main Street once again met all standards to earn national accreditation in 2017. This acknowledgement meant a lot to Troy Main Street, as the organization had no executive director for much of the year. It took the strength, commitment, and time of our wonderful volunteers to make this happen, and I'm very grateful for their passion and dedication to the downtown and to this organization. Troy Main Street's vision is to create the most desirable destination in the Midwest. Throughout 2018, we have strived to make this a reality through strong efforts of collaboration. Here are a few examples of goals we are achieving by working alongside others. In 2018, Troy Main Street established the Green Team. The Green Team is a group of volunteers that work to keep the downtown litter free. Troy Main Street has partnered with the Troy Rec. to encourage their teams to participate in community service. The Troy Rec. has had a group of volunteers clean the downtown at least twice a month since March. We're also working with Partners in Hope and the Mayor's Youth Council, both groups of which plan to join the Green Team this summer. 2018 also saw the collaboration between Troy Main Street and businesses that offer physical activities. Beginning June 6th, Troy Main Street began hosting Wellness Wednesdays, where free physical activity is offered to the community on Praddy Plaza at noon every Wednesday. Our downtown businesses, such as Yellow Tree Yoga, FIT, Troy Family Bike Shop, Tapestry Yoga, and Up &amp; Running, are each leading three sessions throughout the summer. This not only encourages physical activity and brings the community together, but it also introduces these businesses and the services they offer to all participants. The success of our downtown depends on the success of our merchants. In order to help them grow in their business knowledge, Troy Main Street offers free training sessions that focus on merchant meets. Examples of these training sessions include accounting and bookkeeping, storefront design, and inventory management. Troy Main Street has worked alongside entities such as a local bank, the police department, a local designer, and more to bring these sessions to our merchants. Troy Main Street promotes having a beautiful and welcoming downtown. On May 19th, nearly 40 volunteers came out in the rain to plant flowers throughout the downtown. Thanks to a grant from the Troy Foundation, Troy Main Street was able to offer those potted flowers at no cost to any business member who wanted one or two in front of his or her store. Thanks to a partnership between Garden Stone Greenhouse, Pure Bread Coffee Company, and Pachamama Market, our volunteers were able to enjoy their time planting flowers and recovering from their work with free coffee and pastries. Thanks to your support, Troy Main Street has been able to offer more than just potted flowers and training sessions to our members at no cost. During the month of March, Troy Main Street was able to provide free professional photography to its members. After a 45-minute photo session, the photographer provided at least five high-resolution photos to the participating businesses for marketing purposes at no cost to the businesses. This summer, our members can also have a booth at the farmer's market for one week at no cost. In addition to working with businesses, Troy Main Street has also made an effort to work alongside the schools. Students in the Miami East FFA have free booth space at our farmer's market, which is held every Saturday from June 9th through September 29th. We are currently working with Troy City Schools on a project you will see during the second half of 2018, and we are brainstorming ways to partner more with Troy Christian Schools. We have also worked with the University of Dayton. The director of the Graphic Design Department secured an intern for Troy Main Street during the spring semester, who was able to create a new website for our organization. This website shows more clearly what Troy Main Street does and offers a better avenue to learn more about the downtown businesses. Of course, we also collaborate very closely with the city of Troy. Currently, Troy Main Street is working on a wayfinding program with the city that will not only help people direct around downtown, but will also direct people from bike paths to the downtown. We have also been working with the city, among other organizations, to help move forward with the recommendations made from the Downtown Riverfront Development Study. The city has also played an integral role in helping Troy Main Street host our downtown events. I really appreciate the time and effort spent on ensuring we can use the space needed to provide safe and successful events. Our events in 2018 thus far have been safe and successful. In February, we held our first-ever Taste of Troy Trivia Night, in which people came from at least five different counties to participate in trivia, taste food from our local restaurants, and win prizes from our downtown businesses. The Second Annual Chocolate Walk held in March and the Walking History Tours held in April were a huge success. We kicked off summer with an event in May, and we just held our first summer concert held in collaboration with the Troy Hainer Cultural Center on June 29th. Our downtown businesses stayed open late each of those nights to encourage visitors to shop and dine while they are downtown. There are many more events to be held the rest of the year, and we're excited for you to attend them. It is Troy Main Street's goal to maintain a full downtown. Based on the buildings listed on our downtown walking map, there are 117 business spaces, not including the spaces available within certain buildings. Of those 117 spaces, 108 are occupied. Of the nine remaining spaces, three are currently working on contracts with new businesses, and three are undergoing current renovations or are scheduled for construction in the near future. Our 90 members, 11 sponsors, grant funders, and donors have helped Troy Main Street succeed. While we are in a good position financially so far, we do recognize that half a year remains. Since all of our remaining events are free to the public, we are relying on drink sales at the Donut Jam and in-kind sponsors to keep us strong for the remainder of the year. Troy Main Street works hard to keep downtown Troy an energetic place to be. It is because of supporters such as yourself that we can accomplish great things. I sincerely thank you for your contributions too and your collaboration with this organization. Through your support, we are able to offer seven of our 10 monthly events, our farmer's market, and Wellness Wednesdays at no cost to the community. Through your support, we are able to offer free sessions and perks to the downtown merchants. Thank you so much for the part you have played in helping Troy Main Street and our efforts to help downtown Troy be the most desirable downtown destination in the Midwest. Thank you.
Will you take questions?
Sure.
Okay. On the events and things, do you also get outside sponsorship besides the city's?
Absolutely, yes. And you can see all of our sponsors that are listed during each event. We have them named on our postcards and posters that promote the events. All of our sponsors are listed on our website for whoever is a sponsor throughout the year. And we also have banners that we put up naming the sponsors that we post at each event.
Okay. Council members, questions?
What did we find, Patrick? Twenty-five?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five?
Yeah.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Twilliger.
I would just like to compliment Nicole speaking for the Mayor's Bicycle Friendly Committee, Advisory Committee. She has been extremely helpful in our ability to develop our downtown business-friendly program. She has also put herself in harm's way because she volunteered to keep the kiosks up-to-date and informationally accurate. In addition to that, she's in double jeopardy because she also is involved with our pathway, our signage programs. She's an asset to our community and is doing, in my opinion, a very nice job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next on our agenda is a public hearing. Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 24-2018.
Resolution number R. 24-2018, resolution adopting the budget of the city of Troy, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and declaring an emergency. This is the tax budget prepared by the auditor.
I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the ordinance or resolution? I'm sorry. Anyone who wishes to speak against the resolution? I declare the public hearing closed. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the June 18th meeting of Troy City Council.
Sorry. I shoved them someplace. Sorry, just a second. I shoved them someplace. Okay. Minutes of council, June 18, 2018. There was a presentation and an award certificate from the Ohio EPA related to the city's SWAP program. There was a public hearing on ordinance number O. 26-2018. Committee reports, Community and Economic Development Committee recommended that O. 23-2018 a rezoning be approved. The Finance Committee reported regarding amending Resolution R. 16-2018, the loan to the Community Improvement Corporation associated with the Sherwood Center, and that the loan be amended to reflect an APR 4.5 percent. Committee recommended legislation be prepared to amend Chapter 919 of the codified ordinances, including setting a five-year rate schedule that would have no increase for the first three years. Law and Ordinance Committee gave a report regarding the filing of a liquor license. Resolution R. 22-2018, the loan to Sherwood Center, which was amended, was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R. 23-2018, contract for the operation of the Dime Mill Road facility was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O. 22-2018, regarding small cell facilities and wireless support structures, was given third reading and was adopted. Ordinance number O. 23-2018, the rezoning of 530 Crescent Drive was given third reading and adopted. Ordinance number O. 25-2018, accepting final plat of Halifax Estates subdivision, Section 4, was given second reading and adopted. Ordinance O. 26-2018, a rezoning and repealing of ordinance number O. 9-2018 was given second reading. Ordinance number O. 27-2018, authorizing use of public areas for 2018 toward a donut event was given second reading and adopted. Ordinance O. 28-2018, authorizing use of areas of the public for the donut jam event was given second reading and was adopted. Ordinance number O. 20... That's repeated with the numbers, I'm sorry. Ordinance number O. 29-18, regarding the solid waste services, was given first reading and was adopted following various comments. Council did adjourn at 7:59 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with apparently a redundancy that's in there.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to approve the minutes with the correction. All those are...
I think that you should have did after the three years of no reading, the fourth year and the fifth year would even a quarter raised.
Okay, she gives... It's in there. She gives just a summary to us because we all have it in front of us. So she's just reading a brief summary. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Approved.
Move on to committee reports. Our first reports are from the Community and Economic Development Committee and Chairman, Mr. William Twist.
Thank you, Madam President. We have two this evening. This committee met on June 25th to consider the petition filed on behalf of Jane H. Dellencamp, the annexation of 10.284 acres from Concord Township. This property is generally located north of the Creekwood subdivision and has a county zoning of R-1 AAA. Based on the state law section under which this annexation petition was filed and qualifies, there is a very short timeline for council to consider. The three separate pieces of legislation addressing what services the municipal corporation would provide to any parcel within the city, including that proposed for annexation, a statement of buffering requirements, and a legislation considering or objecting to the annexation. It is the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared to provide for the three legislative items required by the state law related to the Dell Camp annexation of 10.284 acres from Concord Township. To meet the timeline of the state law for an expedited annexation, we support emergency legislation, and that's respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
Are there any questions from council members? You may continue, Mr. Twist.
The committee met on June 25th to review the recommendation from the Troy Planning Commission that the approximate 8.015 acres located north of Finsbury Lane be rezoned from R-3B, Single Family Residential District, to A-R, Agricultural Residential District, and that ordinance number O-9-2018 be repealed. This committee supports the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission and recommends that council adopt ordinance number O-26-2018 to repeal ordinance number O-9-2018, and provide for the rezoning of the 8.015 acre parcel located north of Finsbury Lane from R-3B to A-R. Respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Swazer, and myself as Chair, William Twist.
Any questions or comments from council? Thank you, Mr. Twist. The Finance Committee has the next report from Chairman, Mr. Tom Kendall.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. On June 18th, this committee met to consider the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee that a loan be approved from the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund to ADM Real Estate Holdings LLC in the amount of $50,000 towards exterior repairs to the Wasserman Building located at 9 to 11 East Main Street. This committee supports the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee of approving this application as meeting the intent of the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Program, and recommends that legislation be prepared approving the loan application of ADM Real Estate Holdings LLC in the amount of $50,000 from the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund. Committee further supports emergency legislation so that the loan can be processed and the business can order equipment and make the repairs. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Swazer, Mr. Seaver, and myself as Chair.
Are there any comments or questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you.
The Law and Ordinance Committee Chairman, Mr. Swazer, I believe you have a liquor license to read this evening.
Yes, ma'am, I do. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control has transmitted the notice of transfer of the existing C-1 and C-2 liquor permits from UDF Limited Partnership to DBA United Dairy Farmers, 234 10 Ray Street, Deverah High 10 and Company, DBA Quick Mart at 10 Ray Street. Objections must be filed by June 16, 2018. The Police Department has advised that there is no basis for objection to the application.
I... It probably says June. I think it's supposed to be July.
Did I say yes?
Yeah.
It says July.
July, okay. Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks has the next four reports this evening. Been busy. Chairman, Mr. Bobby Phillips.
Thank you, Madam President. On June 28th, committee members, Mr. Lutz and myself, met to consider the ordinance assessment for Phase 9 of the Sidewalk Improvement Program, and the Phase 9 work has been completed for the area described in the detailed report. No objections were received from the recently published notice. The next step of the process is for council to enact the ordinance of assessment, and it is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the final assessment for Phase 9 of the Sidewalk Improvement Program, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mr. Lutz, and myself as Chairman.
Are there any questions or comments from council? You may continue, Mr. Phillips.
The next item that we met to consider on June 28th by Mr. Lutz and myself was the ordinance of assessment for Phase 10 of the Sidewalk Improvement Program. The Phase 10 work has also been completed for the area described in the detailed report. No objections were received from the recently published notice. The next step of the process is for council to enact the ordinance of assessment, and it was the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared for authorizing the final assessment for Phase 10 of the Sidewalk Improvement Program. Again, this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mr. Lutz, and myself as Chair.
Any questions from council members? You may continue.
This doesn't deal with a sidewalk assessment, but it is further concrete work. Committee members, Lutz and myself, met on June 28th to consider bidding authorization for the replacement of the concrete drive at Fire Station Number 3. The current estimate is $135,000. This project was budgeted in the amount of $110,000. The committee was advised that the additional funds are available, and it was the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for Fire Station Number 3 Concrete Drive Replacement Project at a total cost not to exceed $135,000. Again, respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mr. Lutz, and myself as Chair.
Any comments or questions from council? You may continue, Mr. Phillips.
Our last item is, again, considered on June 28th by Mr. Lutz and myself. Consider recommending the resolution of necessity for Phase 11 of the Sidewalk Replacement Program. Phase 11 includes approximately 93 parcels, as described in the detailed report. These property owners would be given until August 10 to obtain a permit for the work. Thereafter, the repairs would be made by the city. It is the recommendation of this committee that the resolution of necessity be prepared regarding the sidewalks in Phase 11 of the Sidewalk Replacement Program. Again, respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mr. Lutz, and myself as Chair.
Any comments or questions from council members? Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
You're welcome.
We now open the meeting to citizen comments. At this time, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Grant Kerber Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R. 24-2018.
Resolution number R. 24-2018, resolution adopting the budget of the city of Troy, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and declaring an emergency. This is the tax budget that is prepared by the city auditor. It must be certified to the county before the 20th day of July.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
No, I'll move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Seaver to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 25-2018.
Resolution number R. 25-2018, resolution approving the application of ADM Real Estate Holdings LLC for loan assistance from the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund and declaring an emergency. The loan is the amount of $50,000 for repairs for the exterior of the Wasserman Building at 911 East Main Street. First reading.
Any questions or comments from council members?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twist to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move for adoption. I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 26-2018.
Resolution number R. 26-2018, resolution establishing municipal services for certain territory containing 10.284 acres, more or less, in Concord Township, proposed to be annexed to the city of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is known as the Dell Camp Annexation. The statement of services must be filed with the county within 20 days of the annexation filed with the city. First reading.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
I'll move to suspend the rules on that. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Phillips to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Move to adopt. I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 27, 2018.
Resolution number R. 27, 2018. Resolution establishing buffer requirements for certain territory containing 10.284 acres, more or less, in Concord Township, proposed to be annexed to the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is also the Dell Camp Annexation, a companion piece of legislation to the prior resolution. Must be filed with the county within 20 days of the annexation filed with the city, and this is the first reading.
Are there any questions or comments from council members?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twiss to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 28, 2018.
Resolution number R. 28, 2018. Resolution consenting to the annexation of certain territory containing 10.284 acres, more or less, in Concord Township to the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the third item of legislation for the Dell Camp Annexation. First reading.
Any questions from council?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twiss to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Move for adoption. I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 29, 2018.
Resolution number R. 29, 2018. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the Fire Station Number 3 Concrete Drive Replacement Project, cost not to exceed $135,000. First reading.
Any comments or questions from council?
Move for suspension. I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twiss to adopt the resolution. Is there any further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
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 Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Move for adoption. I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Phillips to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Moving on to ordinances, we'll ask Mrs. Knight to please read Ordinance O. 26, 2018.
Ordinance number O. 26, 2018. Ordinance changing the zoning of 8.015 acres, part of In Lot 9891, in the City of Troy, Ohio, from the zoning of R. 3B Single Family Residential District to the zoning of A.R. Agricultural Residential District, and repealing Ordinance number O. 9, 2018. Third reading.
Is there any questions from council?
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to adopt the ordinance. Is there any discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance O. 30, 2018.
Ordinance number O. 30, 2018. Ordinance loving sidewalk -- I'm sorry, ordinance loving assessments for Phase 9 of the Sidewalk Improvement Program. This is the first reading. This was reported on this evening.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twiss to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Move for adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to adopt the ordinance. Is there any discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance O. 31, 2018.
Ordinance loving assessments for Phase 10 of the Sidewalk Improvement Program. This will return $113,400 to the city. This is the first reading.
Is there any questions from council?
Move for suspension. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twiss to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Twiss to adopt the ordinance. Is there any questions or comments from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance O. 32, 2018.
Ordinance number O. 32, 2018. Ordinance changing the zoning of parcel number D. 08104502 at 1823 Peters Road in the City of Troy, Ohio, from the zoning of R. 1 Single Family Residential District to the zoning of R. 3 Single Family Residential District. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. There will be a public hearing at the next council meeting. First reading.
And this will go to a second reading then. Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance O. 33, 2018.
Ordinance number O. 33, 2018. Ordinance changing the zoning of In Lot 10797 on Washington Road, a parcel of 33.3712 acres in the City of Troy, Ohio, from the county zoning of A. 2 General Agricultural District to the city zoning of R. 3 Single Family Residential District. This is the land known as the Wilson Annexation. Troy Planning Commission has recommended approval. This will have a public hearing at the next meeting.
And so this also will go to a second reading? Thank you. Now we have a presentation this evening on a brand presentation by Kathy Roder, who is a member of Activate Troy Partnership. Mrs. Roder?
I will need to move over because she's going to use the screen here, so. Should have brought popcorn, huh?
Popcorn.
It's like movie night. So, like she said, I'm Kathy Roder, and I am here representing the chamber as part of the Activate Troy Partnership. The Activate Troy Partnership involves the Chamber, the Troy Development Council, Troy Main Street, Troy Community Works, the Troy Foundation, Miami County, Troy City Schools, and the City of Troy. Many of those were funders of the new community brand, and also the Duke Foundation was part of that. Before we kind of get started, I want to talk about how we got here. It's important to know that we started this well over a year ago, and really after we reflected today, this really kind of started back when we were talking about the America's greatest community. You know, when we won that, well, in our mind, we won it. We talked about different initiatives, and we had the Downtown Riverfront Initiative, and we decided that, you know, in the City of Troy, we don't give up on things. So we moved forward with that initiative. And as we began work on the Downtown Riverfront Study, it became evident that we really did not have a cohesive Troy brand. We had a logo that, you know, as many people have noted, is actually the Chamber's logo. The Chamber owns the red, white, and blue logo that has been used, the Troy, Ohio, USA that we have allowed the city to use. But we really didn't have a story. We had different organizations telling stories. We had the city telling stories. And as we reflected, we also, on my end, from the Chamber and even the Development Council, we were talking to a lot of companies that have a workforce problem. They're struggling. We have issues that we need to meet here in the community, and we can't recruit people or tell people how great Troy is if we, as a community, can't tell that story cohesively. So that's where that started. So, whoops, now I'm in trouble. Now I'm in trouble. See, I told you, Patrick. Watch out. Figure out how quickly. There we go. So, we hired BLDG, and they worked with us, and we did brand positioning. It's three parts. There's a brand experience, and then the visual system that you'll see at the end. As I talked about, we had well over, I think earlier today we said 300 to 350 people involved in this, but really, once we started looking again this afternoon, it was well over 400 people that were involved. It was a diverse group. There was city staff involved, millennials to baby boomers, lifelong Trojans to people to baby boomers, lifelong Trojans to people who had just moved to Troy, representatives obviously from all of the ATP organizations. We had business owners, nonprofits. So, we had a well-rounded group of individuals that gave input to this. So, the brand position. Brand positioning is a short and memorable statement that defines your competitive advantage and how you would like consumers to perceive you among your competitive set. So, Troy is home, where visions and values are shared, hopes and dreams are pursued, and everyone has a hand and a heart in shaping the future. So, again, Troy is home. That was one of the things that BLDG kept saying, that when they interviewed people in the Downtown Riverfront or in the branding breakout groups, people continued to talk about Troy and the home and how important that is to us. Troy is where visions and values are shared, hopes and dreams are pursued, and everyone has a hand and a heart in shaping the future. That was one of the things that continued to keep coming up during the interviews, was that sometimes we don't all agree, but in the end, we all come together. And an example was Gentleman of the Road. There was a lot of negative before we hosted Gentleman of the Road, and then Little Troy, Ohio came together and made that work. Flip here. Brand experience. The Troy -- the Troy brand experience is a set of descriptive themes that allow you to think beyond the task at hand and create experiences that no other city can replicate. This experience can attract new inhabitants, retain loyal citizens, and truly differentiate this place from anywhere else. Land of opportunity. Troy is the heart of hospitality. Troy is home to people of devotion, and Troy has the promise of prosperity. We'll go into that a little bit more. As we go through this, too, I want to note that these are not stock images that BLDG went out and found on the Internet or went through their design work and had these. These are actual Troy images that they acquired during the research period. So, I think that's really cool, too. So, Troy is, whoops, where you can create your dream and live it every day. With endless ideas, avenues, and open arms, we have everything you need, want, and can imagine to make it happen here. Troy is home to opportunity, where everything and everyone is always taken care of. Whether you're looking for a new job, a place to start a business, or where to get a great burger, we go the distance to help you see it through, because taking care of you is the heart of what we do. Troy is home to hospitality, where we work together for the highest good. From individuals to families to creatives, makers, movers, shakers, cheerleaders, and challengers, we all proudly do our duty to make our city clean, safe, and friendly, yet forward-thinking and full of life. Troy is home to devotion, where it's all happening now and for years to come. Driven by the desire to be the change, we are making big things happen today that will continue to build progress and enrich our community and culture for generations to come. Troy is home to prosperity. And then this is just some examples of what people were already saying about Troy in pictures. These are all Instagram images that they found during the research phase, which I think it's a good representation. There's lots of community events. You see teams coming together, lots of different color, and of course, the center of town up there with the circle, so. And then these are just some images that they chose that fit each of those. So, land of opportunity, the heart of hospitality, people of devotion, and the promise of prosperity. And then we put that all together in a story. We have endless opportunities for you to create your dream and live it, to learn, grow, and succeed. We have the courage, passion, and perseverance that motivates others to believe in their city themselves and their power to drive positive impact from the inside out. We have a community with a genuine, undeniable devotion to changing what's possible for you and for the place they call home. We have everything you need and want to stay for a weekend, for a season, for a career, to grow up and retire. Whether you're looking for a new career, an adventurous day trip, the perfect event space, a place to settle into the good life, an education, or just peace and quiet, Troy has everything you need. Make it yours. So, just to clarify, too, now we're going to go into the visual system. So, many times people think that you come up with the visuals, and then you create the story. But what you saw previous is about six months of work, maybe a little bit longer, going back and forth, determining, researching what our story is. And we put that all together. And then as the Activate Troy Partnership, we had to determine, was that the story that reflected Troy, Ohio, and we felt that it was. And from there, then they moved into the visual system. So, the inspiration for the visuals that you're going to see, it draws from the Ohio State flag and the strong community values of Troy. It represents the centralized strength of the city. So, in strong design, you're going to see a badge that we all know is familiar. Many times throughout the interview stage, people talked about Gentleman of the Road. And for many people, that was kind of a life-changing event. It was that event that people thought for sure was not going to go well, it was not going to come together, but it really showed the values of our fellow Trojans and how we all came together, and we welcomed over 40,000 people into our small community for a weekend that people still talk about today all over the world. The Ohio State flag, you'll notice that the "O" in Troy looks very much like the "O" on the -- or the circle on the Ohio State flag. So, it draws from that also. Proud heritage and prosperous history. So, it's drawing from our history with the Waco Airplane and the colors of Hobart. And then the centralized community, obviously, the center of town is the Mary likes to say, our living room. Troy is an epicenter of opportunity and community with genuine, undeniable devotion to driving ripples of positive impact both locally and abroad. We'll talk more about those ripples. So, Troy, Ohio. The Troy logo and brand reflects the friendly, professional, and inviting qualities that radiate from the city. Holding true to the foundation of Troy, a heritage of commerce, this brand asserts Troy's continued professionalism and relevancy in the modern international marketplace. It represents a true passion to strive for excellence locally, nationally, and internationally. Troy, make it yours. The official tagline, "Make it yours," is an invitation for all to take part in what Troy has to offer. Whether it be a weekend of kayaking, a new job, or a place to raise a family, Troy has everything you need. And as I was reading through that today, we interviewed some community members recently. You'll see some videos coming out. And someone that has lived here his whole life and is a business owner, that is exactly what he said. He talked about Troy, and why would you want to leave? Troy has everything that you need. So, I thought that was nice that that reflected that. The circular motifs. So, as they talked about today when we did the branding launch, you will not necessarily see these motifs like this, but the circles are really important to this brand. So, what it does is you have the dot in the center. Otherwise, you could consider it like a pin on a map. So, that recognizes that Troy is at the center of the map, and then we continue to radiate out, like they talked about, the ripples. It's ripples of change outward across the state, the country, and the globe. And it also really represents how we are connected. We're connected here locally. We come together in the center of our town, and then we radiate into Miami County, the state of Ohio, and then on internationally and globally. You will see those used, whoops, uh-oh, throughout. The color palette. The primary palette is the navy blue and orange, which I think everybody has seen. And again, where did those colors come from? They reflect back on our heritage, the Hobart logo. Recently, people have found the bronze lard cans, and those are also orange and navy blue, so another bit of history. It also ties into those colors from the Gentleman of the Road, the navy blue from the state flag. And then you'll also see that there's a secondary palette, and we'll talk just a little bit about that moving forward. So, just an example of some departmental icons. So, these are services where you would just put the name underneath, like Troy Office of the Mayor, Troy Hobart Arena. And then moving forward, you can also see where there's an icon system. So, the icons are fun, but not childish. They're still professional, and it gives the ability for each department to kind of have their own identity within the community brand. So, that's just some examples of the different ones that are out there. And I'm just going to run through these real quick, some just some examples of how the brand would be used on business cards. So, it looks very professional. Not only is it, you know, a calling card for the person who's handing it out, it's also for our community. Troy, make it yours. Some idea on the business suite. And there, you can see where those circles are used to represent, again, Troy at the center and then radiating out. Here would be one for a department. Now, again, this is, these are some ideas and concepts. I should be very clear about that, that the branding company came up with. You will not be seeing new trucks, new branded trucks rolling out on the street next week or anytime soon, but just some examples as to how, again, the icons could be used in a fun way to represent departments. Strawberry Festival, you've already seen these, hopefully. I hope everyone saw those. Those rolled out mid-May as the Strawberry Festival wanted to be part of this and was excited to be part of the community brand. And then one of the really cool things that everyone outside of Troy, I would say, and really inside, too, know about Troy, is that we have the Troy, Ohio, USA pins that the mayor gives out anytime we open a business or he meets with students. He's giving those out. They're all over the world. So, it was important that we also have pins with the new brand on them. So, these are some examples of what those pins would look like. And on. Keep going. And the thought is that really, even though I think for the most part, these have been pins that adults have worn as lapel pins, that the new pins could be more of a collector's item that even a lot of the young students may like. This is just an example of using the brand on the website, not necessarily going to be what the website itself looks like, but just some concepts. Postcard, so you can just kind of see how the brand can be used, rolling out. I think these are the exciting things, is being able to really advertise. Like I said, it's important that we are telling our story out in other communities so that we can recruit people to work here or to live here. So, it's important that we have some good design elements that we can put up. This one, we've talked about a lot. How do we get people to stop along the highway, to know that they need to get off and come and shop in the downtown businesses and support our community that we love so much? So, an example of a billboard, example of updating the map, some different wayfinding signage. Again, some signage. Idea for the water tower for the future. City flags. And I'm not BLDG, so we won't do that. So, I'm not that. So, just, I wanted to, again, kind of just give you some background and feedback. I personally have lived in Troy my whole life, and I'm probably one of those people that until I worked for the Chamber of Commerce, had the same thought process that many other people did, that there's somebody in an office that makes all the decisions. And I have definitely learned, being part of the Chamber, that that is not how Troy, Ohio, works. I've heard about partnerships, but boy, have I seen them in action in the four years that I've been involved with the Chamber. It's really something that we should take great pride in in our community. And then I also have to say that I really applaud the city staff and city representatives that have been involved in this, because this was a big decision to move forward with this. And I would say that probably when we started, everyone involved in our group was not ready to give up the prior logo. But we were forward-thinking and thought about that, and with the leadership of the mayor, we've been able to continue to roll this out. And everyone's not going to like it at first, but we're really excited about it. And like I said, I really think that it's going to help us and help the organizations, the city, tell our story and get other people to know and love the community that we love. Thank you.
Are there any questions from council members or comments from council members? Anyone? Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not.
Mayor Bemish, do you have any comments this evening?
Just to say that there are many doers in this community. You've heard me say for years, what makes Troy so special is our partnerships. You've heard that tonight, and you saw that tonight. I want to thank Kathy and Nicole for their contributions, along with many in the audience that have worked so hard to try to move our city forward, not backward. And they've spent a lot of time. You know, I've complimented the council for their due diligence and how they work. Even though sometimes we don't agree, you know, I appreciate what you do. The same goes for the many people who give of their time, give of their talent, and many times, there are treasures to make things happen that will benefit the future of our community. I'll close by saying, borrowing from the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, which has as their tagline, "Planning today for a brighter tomorrow." And I think that's what we've been trying to do. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tillington, any comments this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to remind folks that on Wednesday, it is Independence Day, July 4, and the city offices will be closed. We will be on the regular refuse and recycling schedule. That's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber?
I have nothing to report this evening, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Friggi?
Thank you, Madam President. I have nothing at this time.
Will this presentation be on a website somewhere that people can look at?
We can, we can make sure we post it on ours. And I know that the partners in the ATP will all have it, and we will make sure that all the, their websites have it as well.
And I also think it would be important, when they post that, to indicate who all those partners were in the ATP, because I think that's sometimes part of the problem is communicating who is involved. Everybody always says, you know, we've got a lot of people involved, but we don't always, the public doesn't always see who those partners are. So, I think the list of them is, would be good to have. Comments from council members this evening?
Madam President?
Mr. Severt?
I'd like to talk about another partnership. Troy Rotary is celebrating their 100th anniversary, and in order to do that, we have partnered with the city of Troy to have a concert on July 4, beginning at 7:30 at Treasure Island. The McCartney Project, which is a Beatles' tribute band, highly rated, highly respected. So, we would invite everybody out. I know I said it last council meeting, but I would say it again. Please come out, enjoy the festivities. It will be an honor and privilege to be president of Rotary at that time, and I personally would like to invite everybody out to come to that event. And it'll be immediately followed by the fireworks, and hopefully it'll be a good time for all.
Thank you. Any comments from city staff this evening? Any questions or comments from anyone in the audience this evening?
Madam President, if I may?
Mr. Swazer?
I believe there's a Fourth of July parade this coming Wednesday at 9:00 a.m. downtown Troy, so come on out and wave your flags.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments this evening? Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. Have a safe and peaceful holiday week. And as Mr. Swazer says, come out and enjoy the festivities in downtown Troy and over at Treasure Island. Thank you.